All right, we have a long work session agenda here. Dr. Grimacy, I'll turn it over to you for the first item.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There are many items on this agenda, but many are of routine board business nature. We do have some that are of significant public interest and then some that are just important, whether there's a lot of interest in them or not. But I do think that the staff has worked hard and we're prepared to enable the board to do its work very efficiently. So I'm allowing our panel to gather. Today, Madam Chair, the staff and our consultants, after they get themselves settled, will be presenting what we refer to as the superintendent's recommended student assignment plan for the new school, new elementary school on Camp Easter Road. I want to compliment everyone who's participated in bringing us to this point. That would include our consultants, Mike Miller and Laura Evans and John Barath and Tim Locklear, but there also have been many others who have participated at community forums and on our advisory committee. There is still room for tweaking of the plan that's presented today, so although I call it the superintendent's recommended plan, it's one that I put before you today, and if there's any final input you'd like to have, we'll take that. I want to emphasize the fact that this plan is being presented to you for consideration as you prepare to offer it for public comment. So your vote at the regular board meeting next week will be merely to validate the plan for the purposes of putting it out to the public and then having the public comment on that. So we're still a month away from final approval of the student assignment plan. I also would like to just acknowledge, because I will formally introduce her next week, the new principal of the new elementary school is sitting in the back. She's already gathering information. Dr. Molly Capps is with us tonight, but I don't want you to shake hands and congratulate her yet because you're going to do that next Monday.
Sorry.
But we are grateful that Molly, this is an example of the homework that Molly's doing to prepare, and at this time she's sort of serving in two capacities. She's continuing her excellent work as leader at Aberdeen Primary School and then building her capacity as leader for this new school. Molly, welcome. So with that, Mr. Barath, are you prepared?
I am ready, sir.
All right. I'll turn it over to you for our presentation.
Thank you. Of which I'm going to turn it over to Laura Evans.
I knew that was coming. I just leaned over and I said, "Are you going to have any words to say?" And he said, "No." I said, "Okay." Well, Madam Chair, Superintendent and members of the board, it's good to be back with you again today. So we are bringing to you, we've called it in the presentation Draft Three, but it's the final staff draft. Ultimately, it becomes the superintendent's recommendation at some point in the very near future. So we will give you some background information as we always have done. As we present, we'll talk about our previous discussions. We'll review the guiding principles. That's what we've used as the driver behind all of this. We'll talk about the feedback we've received at the public forum and the advisory committee and from the online information that we've got. We'll present to you then this third draft, okay, and talk about what changes there were. We'll talk about Phase Two, the larger picture, and then we always include an addendum or an appendix, I mean, of more detailed information. And I do want to say that in the appendix, we've included a synopsis of the first public forum we had and the second public forum we had, the feedback that we received. It's in the addendum, okay? All righty. So we're here today on October 29th, and just since we last met with you on October 1st, we had a public engagement meeting on October 3rd at Vast Lakeview Elementary School. It was well-attended. We had an advisory meeting on October the 15th, which I just have been so pleased with the people on the advisory committee, both the Moore County staff representation and the parents, and then, you know, we always have board members there, and it's just a good, good, helpful conversations. Excellent feedback, and the same was true at the public, if you were able to attend at the public forum. And so we're here today now with the third revision for the assignment area for the school on Camp Easter Road. Once again, I'm committed to the guiding principles. They're excellent. They've been super helpful. You want to emphasize a balance as we develop the new attendance area. You want us to emphasize good planning and good data. You want us to emphasize efficiency, and that really boils down to utilization of buildings and bus routes and that kind of thing. And then involve the community. I think we're doing a good job in each of our drafts so that we're aligning with the guiding principles that you've provided us. And then remember in the top right-hand corner about those guiding principles, they could overlap, they can conflict with each other, they may not be fully implemented, and in this case, we'll see in a few minutes that some of the implementation is going to come in the second phase of the assignment plan. All right, the feedback we've received since our last draft, as I said, we've got a summary of the community forum feedback in the addendum. We're going to look at how we've been tracking the 18-19 membership, and we've requested and received some updates from the municipality of Whispering Pines, and we've not received anything from Southern Pines Planning Department yet, but we want to talk about what updates we have received, because that was part of the public feedback, is to be mindful of growth that may not be included in the original data from back last January, okay? Now I'll turn it over to Mike then to talk about the feedback.
Thank you, Laura. The table you see on Slide Six is the latest Month One data collected directly from the district, so this is not DPI approved yet, but I don't know of significant changes between DPI-approved and what you're going to see here. So this is measured on Day 30. The second column is this year's membership compared to the first column, which is 2017 Month Two. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy between the month of capture, 17-18 data is Month Two data, the 18-19 data is Month One data. However, generally speaking, the trends are fairly stable between Month One and Month Two. For Cameron, we're seeing four more children this year than last, increase of four, increase of five, good thing I studied math. Carthage, increase of seven. Sandhills Farm Life, increase of 14, and for Vast Lakeview, actually a decrease of about 19 for this first month. So the purpose of this data is to kind of calibrate the forecast that we're using and seeing if everything is online. Vast Lakeview, we expected it to grow a little bit this year according to the forecast, so we're seeing a little decline there, and we'll take that into account as we look at some of these scenarios. As Laura mentioned, one of the topics of discussion on both of the community forum meetings was make sure you're getting the most up-to-date data from the planning communities. Is it comprehensive? Is it current? And so that prompted us to go back to Whispering Pines and Southern Pines Planning and request any changes since the data was compiled back in January of 2018. There's two requests out currently to Southern Pines Planning. I have not received information yet, but Whispering Pines got right back with us, and as you can see here, the only change is final plat approval for Phase Three of Summerfield at Aerostone subdivision, which adds an additional 33 lots. One of the things this table will help you understand is about the pacing of development. And those of you in the community forums will know that that's another question that pops up. We've got a lot of potential development residential lots on the planning books, and how fast are they going to come out so that they are going to impact your schools? And you can get some kind of sense of that from this chart. Remember that the second column there was collected in January 18, and the number in parentheses is the number of units remaining out of the approved. So for Aerostone, there are four units remaining, and when we updated that in the third column, there's still four units remaining. In Foxcroft, Phases One through Three, you had 11 units remaining in January with only five units remaining when we got this data in October. So you can look at about six additional units over a 10-month period, six additional units over a 10-month period.
So just so I'm clear, that means six units have been built in a 10-month period?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's not a certificate of occupancy. It's, they're built. Harons Brook, the same, six additional units over 10 months. Newbury Ridge, two additional units over 10 months, and the big mover here is Summerfield with 21 additional, if I did my math right, over 10 months, 21 additional units. So you're looking at about two units per month. I've done this in a lot of districts throughout North Carolina, and what I see here is a pretty typical development rates, build-out rates for these kinds of developments.
Mike, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When the projection was done by ORAD, they didn't, they had to estimate how many additional units would go on per year until they got to the end.
That's correct, yeah.
So how does this differ much from what they had projected?
I had to double-check that, yes. I haven't had time to go back and, they keep that data. All I had was the output, so in terms of numbers of students, it's a good question.
So it could, they could already be built into the forecast of the number of students?
Yes, yeah, yes. Summerfield?
Summerfield, where's it located?
I can tell you.
I think it's right off of Airport Road.
It's off of Airport Road. Right off the Airport Road when you're, it's kind of like the backside of Airport when they fly out, it's like right on the bottom.
Harding Airport.
Yes, thank you.
Harding Airport?
I knew it was on Airport, didn't know where.
So once again...
Mike, if I could, if, I think with Mr. Dennison's question, which is a very good one, I think we assume that these units, these parcels were included in the ORAD data last January, unless we hear otherwise, because we paid a lot of money for that study and we have noted often. But parcels are different than build-outs, and so we have had subdivisions that have 400 parcels, but they haven't inched off of 150 build-outs in three, four, or five years. So that potential is there. This shows you the pace of build-out in these particular cases.
Like Pine Wild, it's not build-out completely.
Correct.
Been here for years.
So let's just assume, you know, that that study still stands unless we hear otherwise.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Dennison, we'll let you know if there's a change.
Yeah, I just want the public to understand that this doesn't necessarily mean that we hadn't already anticipated this happening.
Yeah, all this is right inside the forecast that we're using, yes, sir. And if there's no further questions on this, I'll turn it back over to Laura.
One more.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, you said that you haven't had a response from Southern Pines yet.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, the Carolina area is Southern Pines, is that correct? We're waiting to hear on that.
But we don't know the build-out pace for that one at all, because when we did...
Have they done final approval even on the new, on the additional houses?
I don't recall if council's already decided on that or if the planning board just did. I'll have to look into that. But keep in mind, when ORAD did their report for 2018 January, they met with all the builders to get all the data and everything building up to that, just like Mr. Dennison said. However, this was not in the plan at that time, and so the builder would have had a different response then, as they may moving forward, which is why every couple of years we want to refresh and review that study.
Are there any developments that were not, just the name of the development was not included in ORAD study that anybody mentioned?
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, so let's go to Slide Eight then, and let's talk about what refinements we're bringing to you today for this staff, final staff recommendation. We continue to keep our focus on why we're building this new school on Camp Easter Road. It's to relieve crowding at Sandhills Farm Life and Vast Lakeview. That was the purpose of building the school. All right, so the refinements are going to stay focused to that point. We're also focusing on stability of students, being, I'm from Wake County, already been whooped up upon because we didn't keep students stable, so I'm very focused on that. And we're also going to stay focused on any changes in data that might happen through this multi-year process. So here are the refinements we're bringing you today. At this point in time, we're not recommending any changes to the attendance area between Vast Lakeview and Cameron. It will stay the same for the 19-20 school year. You're going to see in a minute that ultimately it might change, but for this first year, we're going to hold it constant, okay? The changes between Vast Lakeview and Sandhills Farm Life, there will be none. They will stay the same. The current attendance area stays the same, okay? And then finally, we did in Draft Two recommend the area around Ray's Bridge Road or the northern portion of Pine Ridge Road to remain at Sandhills Farm Life, or that, we had recommended that it go to the new school, but at this point, we're going to say, "Let's leave them stable for now and keep them at Sandhills Farm Life," okay?
I need a visual.
Yes, yeah, I do too.
This is just the introduction.
So let's go, if you don't mind, let's go to Slide 10 before we look at the data so you have your visual. Slide 10. So remember, on the left is the current attendance areas, and on the right are the recommended changes. So between Carthage and Cameron, the green and the blue schools, that attendance area is as it is today in this recommendation. There is no change between Carthage and Cameron, okay? Between Vast Lakeview and Sandhills Farm Life, that attendance area, we have, there is no recommendation for change between what it is today. The only changes that are recommended are between Sandhills Farm Life and the new school and Vast Lakeview and the new school, getting back to our sole purpose, that the new school is to relieve crowding at those two existing schools. And then the one other thing I want to point out to you is that Ray's Bridge Road area that in Draft Two, we had, in Draft One, it was at Sandhills Farm Life, stayed at its current school. In Draft Two, we recommended it to go to the new school. But here now, in the final staff recommendation, we're going to say, "Wait up, let's let that stay where it is for now in the name of stability, and then in the next phase, we may revisit that," okay? So basically, the line between Sandhills Farm Life and the new school is the same as it was in Draft One. Is that clear now?
Can we blow that up?
Yes.
So it's just, the one on the right would, that'll help the board members and the public be able to see the nuanced difference for Ray's Bridge Road and...
Here, John.
And this, of course, Ray's Bridge Road section of Whispering Pines is extremely close to Sandhills Farm Life.
Yes, it is.
John, if we can focus on the, on that edge, yeah, if we can just keep kind of zooming in to the orange and the yellow.
And are you using the term boundary the same as attendance district?
Boundary is the perimeter.
Yes.
Yeah, the perimeter of the attendance district.
Attendance area is the area.
John, can we go even a little bit bigger? Zoom in on Ray's Bridge Road, because that's the one that, yeah, getting better. There we go.
Do you have your laser pointer?
What would you like to do?
Ray's Bridge.
Keep going up.
See if you can go one more, John.
Oh, that's what I thought it was. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I saw that.
I'm in there.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And between, if I could restate what Laura said, is that in, this is now back to where it was in Draft One.
Yes.
In Draft Two, the yellow would have brought in Ray's Bridge Road, and now it's back to where it was originally. John, when you and I discussed this the other day, I think it's notable that on each end of Pine Ridge Lake, that there's a gap in the housing. And so the, we don't have a situation where we have one family in one house and a house immediately next door going to two different schools. There's actually a gap around the edges of the lake that form a bit of a barrier. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Laura or Mike.
Actually, on the south, on the south side of Pine Ridge, there are contiguous adjacent homes, there's no students in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not affecting families that go to Moore County Public Schools.
So currently, those are families that don't have children attending school, but in the future, perhaps they might.
On the north side, there is none.
Because the Sandhills Farm Life doesn't show as much, but the yellow part.
Okay. So with these refinements, if you look on Slide Nine, we've got the data, the resulting data, and remember, we've been focusing on the minority percent column, we're focusing on the utilization column, in particular, 21, 22, and the ELA proficiency column. And if you look at those numbers and compare it to the current situation, which is the data table at the top, all of the data is in line, we're moving in the direction of the guiding principles, okay? We're better utilizing, we've got a shorter range on minority representation, we've got, we're not significantly changing the ELA achievement data for any of the schools. It's all positive there. Any questions on the data? All right, and then Slide 11.
Can I go back to that for just a minute?
Yes.
Something that I do want to point out, when you look at that data table, when you look at Cameron, you will see that in 21, 22, the capacity changes to 400. That's why it's in red. There was a capacity change, just like the new school coming online is in red. And just to remind the board, again, the plan there is that we have the ability to take the six-classroom modular unit from North Moore, which we already own, which will not be in use anymore after the additions and renovation, at which point it could be moved down to the school because its core capacity is more than the classroom structure. And so that's a very low-hanging fruit to grab, to bring that up to also enable it to serve not just the Cameron district, but potentially through the next step to be investigated in Vast Lakeview.
And through this process, we've made it clear to the Cameron and Vast Lakeview communities that that's why in the next phase of our discussion of the consideration of district lines between schools, that that is a logical consideration for us, and we owe it to the taxpayers and the county commissioners to consider that, because that's an area where, in our previous discussions in previous years, are we making best use of all of our facilities? Well, at Cameron, the answer is no. We have unused capacity with our core facilities that can be remedied with a nice, safe, six-unit modular building with bathrooms built into it and a new playground for Cameron as well. So, but that's two years away after we're done with that facility at North Moore. It won't cost us any labor, there'll be some cost of labor, but we already own that building, and so there is no cost associated with that. So we do want the public to be advised of making a very serious look at that in the next phase.
So just to be clear, the utilization that's listed under 2021-22 is before any Phase Two changes to attendance districts? This is just what the as-is will be that we can then deal with in the next phase?
Correct.
If we put, if we put six more classrooms at Cameron with no students, then we'll have a terribly underutilized facility at 65 percent. And then, at the same time, Vast Lakeview will be inching up at 103 percent, which helps everybody to understand the need for us to give serious consideration to that trend.
John, refresh my memory, why did we leave out 2021?
We didn't have 2021. We did have 23, 24 previously in there, and we brought it back to 21, 22, because in this area we're talking about, that's the next time that there is a capacity change here.
Thank you.
We anticipate no change, Betty, for 2021.
All right, so if you go now to Slide 11, and this is the data on the larger picture, the new school's primary role was to relieve crowding at Sandhills Farm Life and Vast Lakeview. So if you'll take a look at the utilization and let's look out at, well, let's look at 21, 22, Sandhills Farm Life goes from 151 percent to 79 percent, and Vast Lakeview goes from 123 percent to 103 percent. So we have relieved crowding right out of the gate, okay? But then if you look ahead to 23, 24, Sandhills Farm Life is at 83 percent, still comfortable there, but we still potentially will need to do some work at Vast Lakeview. Then, of course, if you look at the other columns, the proficiency and the minority percentage, we're still in line with your guiding principles, all right? Slide 12. Along with talking about the larger picture, we will continue to monitor membership and development trends. We really need to pay close attention to the capacity impacts of the K3 class-size mandates. That is a huge driver here at all of your elementary schools. Carthage and Cameron are positioned to provide further relief to Sandhills Farm Life if it's The new Southern Pines Elementary School is positioned to provide further relief to Sandhills Farm Life if it's necessary. Time will tell there. The new school on Camp Easter Road will serve a portion of Southern Pines. Remember, it actually sits in the Southern Pines current attendance area, so it will serve some in the future here. The two new K5 schools at Southern Pines and Aberdeen, that's that consolidation of the K2, 3, 5 schools, keep that in mind, it's coming up, okay? And then the new Pinehurst School is still coming up, and that's bringing on additional capacity. So that's all a part of the larger picture. We've just gone one step into a much bigger plan here that's going to come along, but we're going slow. We're going slow, focusing on relieving crowding at two schools that are very overcrowded Slide 12. This map represents areas, the circled areas, three, excuse me? Oh, Mike's got animation, sweet. Okay, three, we're going to look at four areas here, and three of the four are areas we've talked about from Draft One to Draft Two to Draft Three, okay?
Laura, if we could, John, again, if somebody could blow that up, is there any...
Because it's an animation, we can't blow it up right now.
After we animate it.
Afterwards, we'll enlarge it.
Okay. So the first animation, you want to talk about it?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's currently part of the Sandhills Farm Life base. I guess you would call it the southwest corner there. The potential there is to be impacted either by the new school on Camp Easter Road or by Southern Pine, the new Southern Pines Elementary School, or both. The potential there is to be impacted either by the new school on Camp Easter Road, or by Southern Pine, the new Southern Pines Elementary School, or both.
So we're we're circling it, and we're we're announcing today that this is under consideration in the larger picture, okay? Not for the nineteen twenty school year, but in the larger picture, under consideration, we're looking at it, may not change, but we just want folks to know, okay? Pay attention, okay?
If I could, John, is it appropriate to mention that our our student population in that area also is quite modest?
Yes, yes, it is.
The Forest Creek subdivision, for example, we we currently have no students that that attend Sand Hills Farm Life there. So there's a lot of orange there, it looks like a lot of space, but there isn't a saturation of students, so a very modest number of children that live, particularly in Pine Grove, right now, we don't want to move them because we're not sure which school they're going to go to until we get into Phase Two. So, under our guiding principle of avoiding moving children any more frequently than we need to, we think that it's in that next phase as we look to twenty-twenty-one, where a decision would be made on on the on the school for those children.
That's correct, and that is to reinforce what Laura said earlier about stability of students.
Yes.
Move them once, and throughout our entire process, these four areas that they're referencing came up again and again as potential, well, here or here, what's it look like? And as she said, we wanted to be purposeful and take our time. We didn't want to rush into something that could either lock us into a situation we wouldn't want to be, or cause a student to have to move a second time.
And specifically, they could either be at Farm Life, they could be at the new school on Camp Easter Road, or they could be at the brand-new Southern Pine School.
Exactly.
And so, until we get that resolved, then we don't want to move the children one year and then move them the next year and then move them again.
The second circle is circling the the Ray's Bridge Road area that we had previously discussed. Once again, hinging on the fact whether, how Sand Hills Farm Life utilization and the new Camp Easter Road utilization work out. Third school, as we mentioned before, Carthage is is poised to provide relief, if necessary, to Sand Hills Farm Life. And specifically, I think that's Joel Road, is that correct? That area. And as we mentioned before, Cameron is is poised to provide further relief to Vast Lakeview along that border between the two schools.
Why don't we go make it larger for everybody?
And as we, yeah, please do, and as we do, if I could add to the comments that have been made, Madam Chairman. It, as we see, it's getting ready to be disappeared, but you can see the Carthage zone, uh, district runs way up to the Chatham and Randolph County borders. There are individual, there are families that live up that way that have High Falls mailing addresses. And our our precious High Falls Elementary School has been losing enrollment. And so if we have families that live that far north, and would actually desire for their children to go to High Falls, there are roads that run straight across. So there are options in the next phase for us to look at children who currently are are traveling a great distance to Carthage Elementary School, who may go no farther distance to High Falls, bring some numbers into that school that actually could use some attendance, create capacity at Carthage to open the door for a community like along Joel Road or other communities that might then be moved into Carthage. This would be a very good strategic allocation of our facility resources that would be a serious consideration in the next phase of of potential student assignment planning.
I I have a, just a a language question about what we're calling Phase Two, exactly. So I know that in the spring, we need to start looking at the Southern Pines and the Aberdeen school districts, because they will open in the twenty...
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty...
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, is that right? I'm getting confused. No, because Pinehurst is twenty-twenty-one.
No, it's twenty-one.
Oh, twenty slash twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the Carthage and Cameron, will that be discussed at the same time as we're discussing discussing Southern Pines and Aberdeen, or is that a separate, will that be at a different time?
Actually, we're considering it now to revisit again during Phase Two.
So all together, so all of that will be looked at together, okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, it's the superintendent's intention, and I've advised our our staff and our consultants that all of the remaining schools be on the table in Phase Two.
Sounds good.
And we look at a a one, two, or three-year phase in of Phase Two. In other words, it'd be about three steps that might occur there, depending upon what opportu, as each new school comes online, that that families know a year to three in advance where they're going to be.
Sounds good, thank you.
That'd be our challenge, whether we can do that or not is another issue.
We'll have to roll up our sleeves.
And that's our challenge.
And that and that was my question too, and Dr. Bob, you just answered it, but my other question is, basically, we're holding off a little bit until Phase Two for Vast Lakeview and Sand Hills Farm Life, even though they're getting a little bit pulled, but not the, what we were considering, is is that correct? Okay.
I don't think we're moving, we're not moving anybody from Vast Lakeview to Cameron, and we're not moving anybody from Vast Lakeview or Sand Hills Farm Life to Carthage.
No, 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 I just meant, I'm sorry, to the new school.
Okay.
Yeah, just to the new school.
Yeah.
Well, I I think it's wise to leave them all of them, because when ORAD does another study, you know, who knows, things may change in the couple of years.
So just a final summation of the staff draft three or the staff final recommendation. We're moving students or proposing to move students from the two most crowded schools into the new school on Camp Easter Road. That are the only changes being recommended for the nineteen twenty school year when that new school opens up, okay?
I think you're going to have a lot of relieved parents.
Yay.
It's the yellow, it's really, we're focusing in on the yellow at this point.
Focusing in on the yellow, okay? All right, slide fourteen is our timeline. November fifth is your next regular board meeting, where we hope there will be an endorsement of the plan for the, for final community input. We have online feedback for that final, uh, community input, will run November sixth through November the fifteenth, okay? November fifteenth, you you have scheduled a called work session for a public hearing, the superintendent's recommended plan, which would be the the last time parents will have to give input at that public hearing. And then December third, you'll review all the input that you've received up to that point, and make any final changes you'd like to make before, on December tenth, you would approve the attendance area for that new school on Camp Easter Road. And at the bottom of the page, just remind you of the next steps that will, you know, we'll hardly have time for the Christmas holidays or anything. We'll be back looking at it again in in February, looking at Southern Pines Elementary, the new Aberdeen school. All righty, and then just reminder that the appendix has much more detailed information, you can always go there, you get a detailed map, you see all the feedback from the two, uh, community forums there. And that wraps up our presentation today.
I like the plan.
For November fifteenth, can you just clarify where, John, I know where it is, but just for the public, where it's going to be and the time?
Carthage Elementary.
Six at the auditorium.
Thank you.
John was pre-audited.
Yeah, I know.
The one thing I wanted to say is that I I appreciate the level of detail that has gone into this and the feedback that you have listened to from those in community and the parents and the staff. This is an enormously challenging project, and I think what it has opened our eyes, we're lucky in a way that we have options with the new eight hundred school, eight hundred individual schools that are opening. So I think what this has done is really opened up our eyes to some possibilities of looking at the dis, the whole school district in a way that we've not had the opportunity to do before. And so I I think the work that you've done so far is especially helpful to lay that groundwork and to begin that process, and then we'll be finishing it by the end of the school year, right? We'll be done with, uh, coming up with a plan, and then how to roll that out, that it all won't happen at the same time, but that it'll be rolled out over phases, is what I heard, or, uh, over a three-year time period.
That's currently the plan.
It's the current plan, as as we work through this, and as we've learned, we've learned a lot by just doing these investigations and looking through and looking at the data. The data is guiding, and the principals are guiding where, how we're moving forward with this. So it's been a a long process, I know, but I think a helpful one.
Are we looking at the middle school attendance areas in the process of moving on to the, uh, Fa, what do we call this now?
Phase two.
Phase two. As these new schools open up, and we know we might be drawing other areas in?
There are currently some utilization issues for some of the middle schools, so we would like to present some options to see what what could be done possibly for that.
That that's my charge, Ma, Madam Vice Chair. It's our intention to to do that. But when we do it, we're going to continue to apply the lessons we've learned. We have Cameron as an, our only elementary school currently that sends its graduates to two different middle schools. The new school that will open on Camp Easter Road, based on our current feeder patterns, would send children to two middle schools and maybe even three. So when we talk about feeder patterns, we we do want some degree of fidelity in feeder patterns, but we also, for efficiency purposes, want to maintain some flexibility and not be locked into this rigid assumption that all the children in a given elementary school are going to go to one middle school. We think we owe it to our taxpayers to make sure that we're making the best use of our facility assets, as long as it doesn't jeopardize our mission to serve our children. And we think we can achieve both, I I don't think simply because children leave one elementary school and go to two different middle schools doesn't mean that we've compromised our mission. I think we need to be open to that. So that's, that's our preliminary charge as we look to the spring. But if you'll permit us, we we'd like to finish this one. And maybe celebrate Christmas and the New Year, and and then get on with that after the holidays.
Well, the public needs to understand too, that the children aren't going to go to any different tracks with the plan we have for the new school. I mean, if they're, if they were Vast Lakeview and they were going to go to, what did, Greens Creek, they'll still go to Greens Creek, so.
The Vast Lakeview children who come into the new school may still assume they're going to go to Greens Creek.
Any changes later, but there're not going to be any right now as far as middle schools.
Farm Life children would go to, would go to New Century, but we want them to be one community in this new school, we want them to be part of that.
And for clarity of that very dialogue, you can see on the map here, the red line on the map represents our elementary attendance areas. The green line represents middle school. So when you look at this map later and you reflect upon it, as Dr. Grimsay pointed out, the green line is middle school. And you can see how on the top it goes into Cameron and splits it, so it helps you read it clearer.
And likewise, it splits the new school.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank you too, because I know it's, I've been in those meetings, and I know it's, you've you've listened to the public, you've listened to the advisory committee, and I appreciate that, that that means a lot, so thank you.
Madam Chair, any further questions or feedback? Again, the superintendent's recommendation will be that the board would endorse this plan for further public comment directly to the board after next week.